Good evening. A good evening, we will begin, thank you. All right, so we welcome students from Brock University. I was having a mental moment there. Brock University and the faculty. So welcome student teachers and welcome to other guests. We would like to begin by asking trustee Chloe to begin with an opening prayer, please.
In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen. We offer up our prayers this evening for the deceased members of our extended Halton Catholic system. Kieran Kick O'Sullivan Griffin Senior, father of Basil Griffin, secondary teacher at Christ the King Secondary School in Georgetown. Antonio Tony Stefano, father of Maria Borg, early childhood educator at Saint Mary's Catholic Elementary School in Oakville. Dear Father, help us to be the best people that we can be. Help us to strive, help us to prosper. Constantly test us in life so that we can continue to grow in humility and in faith. Most importantly, help us to grow stronger in your faith through prayer. Our brothers and sisters overseas are getting persecuted for their beliefs in you. Help us to remember how privileged we are to be able to praise you and thank you openly for all the amazing blessings that you have given us, that you have given each and every one of us. Tonight, we sit here praying for those who are struggling in life, whether it be emotionally, physically, financially, and spiritually. Bless them the way that you have blessed us. Glory be to the Father and to the Son and to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, is now, and shall be, a world without end, amen. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit.
Dora? Tonight's board meeting is being video and voice recorded and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Now, I would like to ask Madam Vice Chair to read the motions adopted in camera, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In HR hiring, we have ten new elementary teachers that are hired as probationary effective September 1st, 2014, as listed. And we also have an interim principal, Carol Caverly, appointed as acting elementary principal effective September 17th, 2014 to December 19th, 2014.
We now need a motion to approve the motions adopted in camera. Trustee Marai, seconded by trustee Bianna, thank you, all in favor? Thank you. We have the approval of the agenda, can I have a mover, please?
Trustee Michael, seconded by Madam Vice Chair. And I would just like to mention that on number eight, 8.3, request for out of Canada or US travel, that is coming as an action item, there is no staff report on that. And the reason for that is because there is a very limited time span for that, it's coming up very quickly and we just don't have the time to go to the staff report. So that is why it's placed as a straight action item. And we will talk more about that at the appropriate time. So we've got a mover and a seconder, I did get that, did I not? Yes. All in favor, please? Thank you very much. Declaration of conflict of interest, are there any conflicts of interest this evening? Okay, thank you, we have no presentations, we have no delegations. 6.1, approval of the regular board minutes of September 2nd. Can I have a mover, please? Trustee Morrison, seconded by trustee Marai. Any questions to the minutes? All in favor, please? Thank you. Business arising from previous meetings, 7.1, on page seven you will find the summary of outstanding items from previous meetings, any questions? No, all right, thank you. Action items, 8.1, annual review of policy 1-19 Occupational Health and Safety, trustee Morrison.
Thank you. A seconder for that motion, please, trustee Rowe, any questions?
Madam Chair, it's really most keeping applicable to us every year.
All right, thank you, all in favor? Thank you very much. 8.2, annual review of policy 3-50 Workplace Violence, trustee Morrison. Thank you. Trustee Bianna, you're seconding that?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Any questions to the motion? All in favor, please? Thank you. Moving right along, 8.3, request for out of Canada or USA travel, stock travel, international student program. Superintendent Cipriano, you wish to speak to that?
Sure, thank you, through you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like, I would like to apologize for the short turnaround in not presenting a staff report prior to this. As we've presented in the past, our board is exploring the opportunities available in international education, specifically attracting more international students to our schools within our board. There are many benefits to international students studying, learning, and being part of our school communities, both to the students attending our schools and of course to our current students. As the next phase in our international education plan, we realize that a more active marketing and recruitment strategy is necessary in order to compete with other boards in our province and other boards and other districts throughout Canada. Part of the strategy is attending student fairs and meeting and working with student recruitment agencies. The upcoming FPP EduMedia Recruiting Fair has been organized, has been organizing its biannual fairs in Mexico's most thriving markets for over eight years. It is the largest student fair organizer in Latin America. The fair attracts thousands of students as well as groups of students, and they utilize social media in connecting with families and recruitment agencies. Mexico as a country sends over 11,000 students internationally to study abroad. Within Canada, Mexico makes up our, the third largest country sending students into Canada. The cost of the fair is, includes a large booth where we'll be able to display our banners, our board logos, our newly created brochures, which are, we've translated in both English, from English into Spanish. We will have a promotional PowerPoint running outlining all the benefits of studying in Halton Catholic District School Board. The brochures highlight each of our secondary schools individually, their individual communities, the programs they offer, their extracurriculars. The cost of the fair also includes our board being advertised in all of the FPP fair promotional materials that have been advertised and are advertised throughout all Latin America. In addition, if approved, there will be an opportunity to meet with three of the largest Mexican student recruitment agencies responsible for almost 25% of all international students that come out of Mexico. These agencies are Universo EducaTivo, Class Education Counselors, and Class Consulting. Attendance at student fairs and meeting with international student recruitment agencies positions our board as a desirable destination for international students. Participating in these events coupled with one-to-one meetings with leading student recruitment agencies allows for the development of relationships with individual families, their children, and the agencies who work directly with these families in recruitment and placement of these students. The ability to attend these types of fairs enables our board to showcase our provincial leading schools on a global scale, reinforcing our reputation as a model learning community, distinctly Catholic, providing exceptional education while nurturing the call in our students to love and serve as a people of faith, living out God's plan, and ready to transform society. And so the following recommendation is presented for your consideration. It be resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve the request for travel outside of Canada or the USA by one senior staff member to attend the FPP EduMedia EduExpo Student Recruitment Fair in Mexico City from October 2nd, 2014 to October 6th, 2014.
Superintendent Cipriano. Trustee Lemay, you're moving? Seconding. Trustee Danko. Questions to the motion? Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. I see the need for it and of course I'd like to see our schools grow as much as we can. My question is, would he be going alone on this trip? I'm sorry, I'm just a little skeptical, I mean, there's been a lot of travel in Mexico and it hasn't always been safe travel, so my concern. Okay, thank you.
We're busy. But are you going alone or will you be with colleagues?
From our board, I will be going alone. It is a large student fair that will be attended by hundreds of board representatives from across Canada and the US. The hotel is the hotel where the fair is being held at, so my travel will be exclusively from the airport to the hotel and the, and meeting with the three agencies. That will, those will be the only real outside places that I would be traveling. But I would be on my own.
The three agencies, do you meet in the hotel?
We're, currently, we're scheduled to meet with them at their, in their, at their offices, seeing if we can meet at a central location in a hotel. The, I've mapped it out and it's not far from the hotel. I would, I would obviously be traveling during the day and trying to be as safe as possible.
And there are other people going down also?
There's, there are literally hundreds of individuals representing all different boards.
Thank you. Chloe, did you have a question?
So I have a quick question in terms of, let's say that this works and we attract a lot of international students, I know that there is a fee to be part of the school board if you are not in Halton, so is there, is there going to be some sort of financial aid or is there going to be some sort of like need-blind basis for these applicants? Let's say they come from a lower-income family and they're not able to pay the full tuition fee?
Superintendent Cipriano?
Sure, that's an excellent question. And unfortunately, there is no financial aid provided for families at this time. It is not common practice for any school district to offer financial aid. We might want to explore that at a future later date if we do find that there is a need, there is a desire from families who maybe can't afford it. But you are correct, the tuition fee is set and there is no financial aid from a school board perspective.
Chief Marai?
Through you, Madam Chair, just was wondering if the superintendent could provide us some of the material that he'll be bringing down there for the marketing of our board.
Through you, Madam Chair, absolutely. We are currently still working on it and the translations, it's a bit of a last, we're going to be working right up until the moment, if approved, that of departure, but we will bring back as part of the presentation all the materials, the marketing materials, the brochures, and the PowerPoints that we did present.
Thank you. Any other questions on this topic? Okay. Did we have a mover and a seconder? I think we did, did we not? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Okay, thank you very much. Our next item is, let me see, staff reports, none. Information items, do we have an update from the student trustees? Student trustee Gerald, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have sent out our applications for our Student Senate. This year, we're doing online applications and they are due October 3rd. Hopefully, we'll have our Senate established by our next board meeting. And we're planning to have our first Senate meeting on October 14th at St. Ignatius Loyola. We've also taken a look at our plan for this year in terms of initiatives. We want to focus on the bullying prevention campaign that we have done last year. We, last year, we started our own Halton Catholic internal competition that now feeds to the regional police, give respect, get respect. It was a great success and we want to continue this. Our kickoff should be sometime in November with the actual event, the deadline being in March. We're also deciding to go forward with last year's pilot project, which was the Elementary Sen, Elementary Students Senate. And we're still working on the details of both. At this point in time, that's all I have to report.
Thank you very much, sounds very interesting. Any questions for our student trustees? No? Okay, great job, guys, excellent, thank you. Now, we are on item...
Thank you, Madam Chair, the list of trips that are taking place over the next couple of months is before you. Happy to answer any questions since you have them.
Is the Muskoka Woods, is that a new venue? I don't recall seeing that before.
I'm not sure if it's a new venue, but I don't believe that they've gone there before. So I'm not sure if the venue itself is new. I can check into that, I'll go back to you.
Page 19 and 20? Bishop Redding? Yes? Maybe we can ask for a clarification and an email, please, Superintendent Nara on that?
Sure, forget one, thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Bianna?
Touching same subject is two schools going to Tim Hortons camp. One paid $285 and the other one $310. And it's basic, the same thing. Relation, physics education, science, all the same. So that's probably because one there is funds, the other one no funds. I figure, I don't know.
Holy family to live further?
Correct.
$25? It could be...
Sanlu?
Yes, yes, there's more children going.
Yes.
Yeah, it would be...
Through you, Madam Chair, I know I've asked in the past if we track each school and how many trips a year they have. Do we have any kind of report on that?
Yes, it would be in the files, yes. So, Madam Director, so she'll bring a report back.
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair, we'll bring one back at the next meeting, thank you.
Any other questions pertaining to the trips? No? Thank you to Superintendent Nara. And we are now on 10.3, the 2013-14 Year End Audit Planning Report from KPMG. Superintendent McMahon?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. This report, same one that was presented to the audit committee last, a week ago, with the exception that the ministry memorandum referred to in number four is now added into the report because we just got it yesterday. And on that note, sorry, there's a typo there, it should be released on, not on. And under item A, Ministry Information Sessions, those happened today. Myself, Roxana, Franka Gibson, our manager of budget and accounting, and our new financial analyst, Jay Chantavong, we're in attendance along with Janet Allen, our KPMG audit partner. So the report is now complete with that addition and myself or Roxana, I'd be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Thank you. Any questions on the report from KPMG? Seeing none? Okay. 10.4, the budget report for September 1st, 2013 to August 31st, 2014, the preliminary report, Superintendent McMahon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My comments pertain to both 10.4 and 10.5. Our year end is underway, hence the previous report. These are the preliminary numbers on the sort of August month end, if you will. Our year-end process is a lengthy one and it culminates with bringing you the financial statements, which will be at the second board meeting in November as we usually do. So again, on this, on item 10.4, 10.5, myself or Roxana, I'd be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Thank you. Any questions for our accounting team? No? All right, thank you. 10.5, Capital Projects Report as of August 31st, 2014, Superintendent McMahon?
I covered that in both my comments, yeah, my comments.
10.6, Municipal Elections Act Compliance Audit Report, Superintendent McMahon?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. In 2010, as the report indicates, the Halton Public Board and ourselves actually had a joint committee for this purpose. This is the compliance audit committee, quite separate from our own audit committee. This is in the event that a constituent calls in to question finances of any candidate. The Halton District School Board has decided to set up their own compliance audit committee and so we have in turn had to set up our own. And the, what we did was get the former chair, we approached the chair of CPIC, we actually obtained the former chair of CPIC as well as the two members, external members from our audit committee who graciously volunteered to be part of this committee were it to come into play. Thank you, Madam Chair. And Frederick or myself would be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Thank you. Any questions from trustees on that topic? No? All right, thank you. Superintendent Overholt will now tell us about the Parents Reaching Out Grants to Schools.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. The report before you is a good news report in regards to the parent reaching out grants that are provided by the Ministry of Education. As we know, parents are a key part of success in our education and we certainly want parents to be engaged in their student and their child's learning. And this grant is provided to all schools in the province of Ontario to apply to. It has been in place since 2006, an opportunity for grants for parent councils to apply to, get funds from the province. So grants promote parent engagement at the local, regional, provincial levels. There's two types of grants that are available, one in which school councils can apply, and a second one in which parent organizations such as our CPIC committee can apply to. The maximum grant for the school projects is $1,000. Over the years, our schools and our board have been very successful in securing these programs. Just to let you know, the percentage this year, the ministry has seen a great number of projects being approved, over 2,200 projects were approved this year. Only of, only 2% of the applications that were presented were declined, so 98% approval rate. For our board, there's a total of 30 school projects from our board that have been approved, totaling $28,755 indicated on the appendix that is attached to the report. Various topics that various schools in our board have put forth relate to social media, childhood stress and anxiety, math night, eating, healthy eating, financial literacy and family fitness, and building assets. So a wide range of topics that parents can definitely be involved in and get information on. The school councils are required to report back to the ministry in regards to funds being expended and that has to be expended by June 30th of 2015. So the projects that our boards have been approved, the school councils' projects that have been approved are attached and I'm more than happy to answer any questions that any trustees would have.
Thank you. Questions for Superintendent Overholt, trustee Lemay then, Madam Vice Chair, then trustee Marai?
Thank you. Through you to Tim. Say, um... Do these, do these grants and the nights that they're going to have these presentations or whenever they're going to do them, do they go out to other parents in the system? For instance, if, if I was a parent at Ascension and I wanted to go to the Children's Mental Health Series at St. Patrick's, like, do we advertise these among the families of schools or make it a little bit broader than just that one school? Like, is it open to other parents?
Superintendent Overholt?
Through you, Madam Chair, very good question. Depending on the project, I would assume that some would go out to families of schools and they certainly want to get as many parents as they can to some of these sessions. I can inquire as to the projects that are out there, as to which ones will be going out beyond their community, but certainly would expect some of them would be doing that.
Perhaps just an email to us would be good. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Allison, you have something more? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I just want some clarification, whether it's Holy Rosary Burlington or Holy Rosary Milton.
It's to do with the Midan numbers.
And I just wanted to say that I know in the past assumption has had speakers come in through the programs and they have put it out into the community.
Need to do something for trustees, give them the Midan numbers of the twin schools, so to speak?
Through you, Madam Chair. I looked at a couple of the other schools and I forgot to do Holy Rosary, so I will find out for sure which one that one is and get back to you.
Yeah, well, it's along the same lines, I had already mentioned it earlier about which St. Joseph's School it was as well. I know we used to just put an A or a B in brackets afterwards. And then, just from a marketing point of view, our schools seem to have all, quite a different range of appendices on the end, from separate to just school, to Catholic Elementary, to Catholic. Maybe we should be trying, try and become uniform with that from the schools themselves.
Madam Director?
Just a point of note, when a school was initially created or requested from, from the ministry, the name that was put in at the time when, is the name that sticks and they attach a number beside it, called the Midan number, and that's how every school is identified in the province. So we would, we'd have to make a request to change the name perhaps and then link the same Midan number. It used to be my job at the ministry.
Madam Chair, just through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Rowe, just the clarification that this is a ministry document, that it isn't from our board, so I just wanted to clarify.
Trustee Marai?
Through you, Madam Chair, how many grants did we receive in 2012 and then how many did we receive in 2013? Just to see what our trajectory is.
Through you, Madam Chair. I have, last year's numbers, we had 34 schools. I don't have the year before's, I can get that for you as well.
And all I was going to comment is there's a lot of good topics here, but I think that Family Math Night has to be the winner. Who couldn't? Family Math Night.
Seem to be a lot of schools that do that. Thank you, Superintendent. Eight minutes of the Policy Committee meeting of May and 11.2 is the minutes of the CPIC meeting. There is no correspondence, are there any questions? I don't believe so. No questions on the table? No, thank you. We do not have to go back into in-camera, we do not have any absentee tonight, so I think, yes, go ahead. Oh, okay. So we're about to adjourn, but you want to talk about that? Okay, Madam Director's going to talk about the calendar.
Beg your indulgence for a minute, trustees, at your, at your table you'll find our new look and feel for the calendar. We are hoping that it serves multiple purposes for our parents and our students. It has obviously a condensed calendar with the important dates and also our school emergency closure and bus cancellations plus the busing zones. And it opens up to talk about who to contact, Board of Trustees, our various committees, a little bit about our board and our strategic plan, and then some information on the new Canadian Anti-Spam Legislation for parents to read about, and then a directory of all of our schools and their phone numbers. So I hope this is useful to you and to our family and I want to thank Lisa and Andrea for their creativity in thinking of, thinking out of the box for a calendar this year.
An excellent job, a lot of information put in a very concise, easy-to-read way. Are there any questions at all? Comments from trustees? Yes, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
And just on, just would like to formally congratulate trustee Rebenda on her acclamation to be Milton trustee.
We will have adjournment, a mover, please? Trustee Bianna and trustee Morrison? You weren't quick enough, John. All in favor? Thank you very much, and the closing prayer, Madam Marai?
Madam Chair, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Dear heavenly Father, you made your world out of love. We are sorry for when we failed to appreciate all you have done for us. Thank you for sending your son, Jesus, to guide us to the right path and show us how to live. May his example always remind us that we are to love you above all things and love our neighbor just as much as we love ourselves. We ask this through your son, our model of love. Amen.
Thank you to Brock's students who came tonight. This is an exceptionally short meeting, so don't expect it that way every time, but I'm sure it'll be a nice short assignment for you. So we're glad that you're here, and to our other guests, thank you for spending some time this evening with us. Thank you, good night.